I'd like to call the Triwood Madison December 7th, 2023 Work Session Meeting to Order. Ms. Allen, would you call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes.
And Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
Yes. Now, will you stand for the pledge?
Our pledge is to reflect on the United States of America and to live in peace, one nation, under God, in the Father, and in the Son, and in the Holy Spirit.
And tonight, our mission statement will be read by Parker Forte, a fifth grader at Westbrook Village Elementary.
The mission of Triwood Madison City Schools is to graduate all students prepared to excel in a global society with a commitment to lifelong learning by guaranteeing a challenging curriculum facilitated by an innovative and dedicated staff, community participation, and state-of-the-art resources in a stimulated atmosphere.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I hope someone got a picture.
Well, if not, we can definitely take a picture of him right now.
Yes.
Parker, can we get a picture of you?
Okay.
Thank you, Parker. Thank you.
And I would like to also mention that he's the second Forte to do this for us.
I remember.
Yeah, exactly. His sister has done it as well. So, thank you, Forte family, for providing us speakers.
Thank you again. Now, I'd like a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll move.
I second the stated.
It's been properly moved and seconded. We do have an addition. Under Board Report, we will add the resignation letter from Ms. Denise Moore. And that would be item 3B. Are there any other changes? And it will be for approval.
3B, under Board Report.
Dr. Cosby, did you have any other changes? Okay. Ms. Allen, would you call the roll with the addition to item three?
I certainly will. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes.
And Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
Yes. The agenda has been adopted with the change. And now, presentation. So, turn over to Dr. Cosby.
All right. Well, the first presentation is our district donors' recognition. And we have a cake in the back, but the people that we're recognizing, unless, I don't think anybody new has signed up, are all very involved in the district. So, we've decided that after our students perform, we're going to allow them to go back and actually have that cake.
Okay.
But for the purpose of recognizing people who have donated to us, I would like to have that list, and I will call out. We do have certificates, which we will get out for you before we leave today. We're going to start with Mr. Lumpkin. Would you please stand? Ms. Mallory, would you go into the office, please, and would you get Mr. Lumpkin's certificate? And there's also a certificate for the two of us. Yeah, Ms. Pardo will have them. We didn't know who was on the list until us. So, we want to thank you for your continuous donations to our system, to our school, and our students. And so, we want to recognize it tonight. If you want a piece of that cake, that's back there. Please feel free to get some. Otherwise, those kids are going to eat it all up, I'm sure. Also, also on the list is Ms. Allen, who made a donation this year as well. And Ms. Allen, would you want to speak to that?
As a Secretary of Treasure for OASCO, that's the organization that I belong to, Ohio Association of School Business Officials, I was able to give two scholarships. One was a thousand dollars, and the other one was a thousand dollars. So, we're two one-thousand-dollar scholarships to our students. And so, I didn't realize I was being recognized, but I was glad to do it.
And also, some of you may be aware, but the majority of you probably are not, and recent, this past year, my mother passed away. It'll be two years at Christmas. And my husband's mother did as well. And so, I've made two scholarship donations of a thousand dollars each in their names. It's Jean Hardwell and then Juette Cosby. Mr. Lumpkin, you want to come up? We have.
We'll be right with you all, okay?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, we're just going to get a picture. Did Board, would you like to get a picture? Yeah, Mr., he's taking one, so that's fine. Thank you. Mr. Davis, you're going to need to move over. Thank you. Thank you. I got you.
And on behalf of the Board, thank you to Mr. Lumpkin, Ms. Allen, and Dr. Cosby. And we also have other donors that are out there, and I know you know who you are. We have quite a few. And we want to extend that to be a special recognition, and that is being planned for the New Year. So, please look forward to it, and please show up. Thank you, and thank you all. And Dr. Cosby, our group here today?
Yes. Well, if you, if you'll notice, we have recognition and information about supplementals.
Okay.
And there's Muse Machine is one of our supplementals.
Okay.
And so, we have a presentation from Westbrook Village Fifth Grade Muse Group.
Thank you.
You were ready for you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My Fifth Grade Village of Masterminds, they have a performance. Last week, Beth from Muse Machine worked a week with four, three of the, excuse me, Fifth Grade classes, and they put together this routine. So, they're going to share it with you, and then they're going to tell you what it was all about, if you're not sure when we're done. Okay? So, get in your positions, please.
While we're waiting. Do you want everybody to introduce themselves?
Yes.
Can we do that?
Hello, my name is Jerome Scott.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, my name is Angel.
Hi, my name is Makaya.
Hi, my name is Samaya.
Hi, my name is Ryan.
Hi, my name is Kyra.
Hi, my name is Parker.
Hi, my name is Olivia.
Hi, my name is Mary.
Hi, my name is Jason.
Hi, my name is Aria.
Hi, my name is Demir.
Hi, hi, my name is Riley.
Hi, my name is Natalia.
Hi, my name is Micah.
Hi, my name is December.
Hi, my name is Tori Asia.
You guys did an excellent job. They're looking to speak today.
Axis is the imaginary line about which your body rotates. Rotation is the action of rotating around an axis or center.
One, rotations. Two, rotations. Three, rotations. Four, rotations.
A solar flare is an intense burst of radiation coming from the release of magnetic energy associated with sunspots. Orbit is the curved path of a celestial object or spacecraft around a star, planet, or moon, like planets orbiting around the sun. Revolution is a single complete cycle of an object around a point. A constellation is a group of stars that appears to form a pattern or picture like the Big Dipper. They are easily recognizable patterns that help people orient themselves using the night sky. Space is full of many wonderful and marvelous things.
All right. So, thank you for allowing us the privilege to come and perform on one of our Muse Machines, which we shortened it for the board meeting tonight. They did perform it a little with all of the fifth graders last Friday for the building. But I figured, just in case you're wondering what it was about, we have a couple of kids that wanted to speak today, and Angel will be one of them. So, go ahead. When we practiced earlier, Miss Beth.
A rot- a rotation is a something that orbits around the sun.
Revolution, revolution is when you spin around the axis or around something.
So, the students all worked very hard with their performance etiquette. We talk a lot about being serious because you're putting on a show for everyone, so they, the audience will feel what you're doing, what you're saying. We had giggling. They're fifth grade. What do you expect? But they had fun doing it, and they really loved it. So, once again, guys, thank you for coming and showing up. We're going to go enjoy some cake now. How about that? Oh, and before I forget, parents that took time out to come out and bring your fifth grader, I really do appreciate it. We all appreciate it because my fifth grader started with me last year. They were in fourth grade, so they got to know Mrs. Harden. Expectation, but they're awesome kids. So, that's why they're here, and I really appreciate them. Yes, they developed. They actually, the teachers worked with Miss Beth to what they're working on, but then the students developed the moves and what they want to do, and they practice it. And this village of fourth grade, excuse me, fifth graders did the best out of all of the students in the building. So, they did really good. Very proud of them.
Thank you.
So, thank you. So, please.
Thank you. And thank you, parents, for bringing them out tonight. And that was really energetic. Dr. Cosby, did you want to take a break at this point? Or did you?
I think the, I think most of the parents are leaving.
All right, we'll take a five-minute, a five-minute break, so that anyone who would like to have some cake, please feel more than welcome to do so.
Five minutes, board.
Did you find him?
I'm wonderful. How are you?
Throughout the school community. One of the topics that I sat in on was bringing out the math genius in black children. One of the things they did and they showed, we have so many devices and we have so many applications that we didn't have when I was in school, okay? There's, um, not just cell phones, tablets, laptops, but the technology with AI. And they talked about how to harness that technology and bring it together in the classroom. I know we have the pouches, okay? But they were actually using their cell phones to come up with strategies in order to solve, problem solve. And it wasn't just, you know, miracle problems, it was story problems. And then they had to find examples of what that looks like in real life through technology. And so you had all these kids, when we say no phones in the classroom, no phones in the classroom, but they were actually teaching and learning on the technology. So it was amazing. Um, another one, and I just, I'll share these two, but they were all good. But I like this, and Dr. Cosby, we talked about this at one time. And I'm not sure which board member brought this up, but they talked about how to combat, um, violence and promote unity throughout the school community. But they talked about these groups of individuals who come from a community, kind of, a kid like that. Who come in, the grandfathers, the fathers. And I know we do a lot in some of the buildings with donuts for dads and all of those things. But bringing those group of men into the school district as an example. And not just as an example, but really and truly to be able to mentor, to coach, um, to teach. And even when it comes to, um, what do we have, two people. They want these relationships throughout these districts where there are incidents of, um, class distractions and disruptions, the fight, the conflicts between students. They even get involved in the mediation piece through restorative justice, these, these men. And they actually show the practice. And not only they show the practice, but they talk the practice to the students. So there were so many great, uh, subject matters. But what I liked the most is the enthusiasm of the teachers and the directors. We actually went to lunch with Lorraine City Schools, um, Director of Community Curriculum Diversity and Special Education. And just, and if anybody knows the Lorraine story, they were taken over by the state. This is the year that they gained their rights back as a school district. So they were talking about all the wraparound services they put in place, but mostly it was just the enthusiasm of going into this year, knowing that they had a successful plan. Everybody was on board, um, everybody's working together. And Dr. Cosby, I know you're part of the superintendent's coalition. And I believe their superintendent is a part of that coalition. And so I'm sure, I'm sure that he shares some of the things that they're doing. Whether you are, um, re-recovering, restructuring, or just the day-to-day grind of the district, those strategies didn't work anywhere. But again, it was so exciting and they are excited. Their superintendent has to make them go home. They were telling us they work, what, twelve, thirteen hours a day, every day but Sunday.
I think I can relate to that.
Okay.
Mine are the same way.
Yes, right, absolutely. Where these people, I mean, and teachers too. And so it was exciting because the enthusiasm is there and it's there in every district. That's what I found, including ours. Um, and that's something that we as a board, we don't really see as much because we come in here twice a month. We look at our agenda, we do the district's business, we talk about wins. We get to see what our kids are learning and, and, and teaching and learning. But we never really interact with the teachers and some of the things that they are doing. And that is what this conference was all about. And it was just, it was just amazing. It is a really great conference to go to.
Well, thank you.
All right, I had an awesome, awesome, awesome time in New Orleans. I had the privilege of attending, um, How to Create an Effective Leader Within the School District. As Ms. Moore has stated, there's only very few s- school board members that attend this, um, particular conference. So during that whole entire discussion, I was the person used as for, say, the, the target for that particular meeting. Because what we talked about is how a lot of our administrators, a lot of our teachers and staff have the disappointment with the school board. Um, and they were able to communicate and to express where they think that the school board, what, what steps should the school board take? How involved should they be? What they should say, what shouldn't they say? So it was, it was an awesome experience to understand what some of our teachers hear, that some of our administrators, what our superintendent, what our treasurer, what our directors go through on a day-to-day basis and how they feel about the climate of the Board of Education. So that was very interesting. I had a lot of time, opportunity to network and collaborate with a few different people. For me, it was just the opportunity to build upon the resources that Trotwood has already provided for me and to bring back. Um, one of the things that I had the privilege of talking to a young man that I'm going to give the information to, um, some of the members of the cur- of the school board and our new members. It was, I had the opportunity to attend a show. It was called Schoolyard Rap, where a group of rappers come together. They rent out a theater in your local city. They invite a bunch of schools and they rap about black history, Latino history, um, American history. And it's a fun and interactive way to connect with kids who, whereas pop culture is the leading, um, genre for a lot of our children today. So that was very interesting. It was a little bittersweet for me because, uh, I had to celebrate my 30th birthday on business. So, but nevertheless, it's always a good thing to collaborate and to bring back information to better, um, support Trotwood Madison Schools.
Happy belated birthday.
Thank you.
Yes, happy 30th.
Yes, thank you.
I remember it already.
Yeah, it's not open for community comments. The board, uh, is not open for community comments at this time.
Will we, yeah, it's in the afternoon?
In two weeks, two weeks our business meeting.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Community comments are at the beginning of the meeting and you fill out a form with your name and address and provide it to the treasurer and then make comments. Yes, please.
December 21st, December 21st, yes, on Thursday, it starts at 5:30.
But I, I will talk to you after. And now we will move to the treasurer's report. President Jeter Freeman? We do have item 3B that we added to the agenda, which is the approval of the resignation letter of Ms. Denise Moore. And, uh, I'll take a motion to approve the resignation.
I move, I move that we accept it. As quick as possible.
Been properly moved by Mr. Davis and seconded by Ms. Cherry. Are there any comments, Ms. Moore, that you would?
Uh, yeah, there are comments. Thank you, President Jeter Freeman. And, um, thank you, board, for accepting the resignation. But you know what always kills me? We put resignations on the agenda, not just for ourselves, but even for our staff that are resigning or they're moving on or even retiring. And I often wonder, why do we need a vote for that? Because it's not like we can hold people prisoner, correct?
Correct.
But I want to say this, um, to the board. And this is my letter of resignation. And I, I did this, really putting a lot of thought into the last 18 years here on the board. And I realize, um, that's a lot of time since 2005. But, Dear President Jeter Freeman and board colleagues, with mixed emotions, I submit my resignation from the Trotwood City School Board, effective December 31st, 2023. After 18 years of dedicated service, this decision is both exciting and bittersweet as I transition into the role of Trotwood's Councilwoman-elect. Serving the Trotwood School community has been an honor and my heart is filled with gratitude as I reflect on the challenges and triumphs we have faced together. Throughout my tenure, I have witnessed our students' resilience, our staff's dedication, and our administration's unwavering commitment. The journey has been marked by invaluable lessons, personal growth, and the pleasure of collaborating with many remarkable colleagues. I extend my most profound appreciation to all those who have contributed significantly to the district and served our students. Having served as Vice President on several occasions and President of the Board for six non-sequential years, I have seen the commitment and passion of individuals too numerous to name. Each one has played a vital role in shaping the trajectory of our district and I am confident that the legacy of commitment to education will endure. As I pass the torch, I wish to offer reflections and advice to the present and incoming Board of Education members. Above all else, our purpose is to educate and prepare our children for success in a global society. I implore you to remain steadfast in this mission, prioritizing the best interests of our ci- our citizens stu- and students along with the district. Remember, the superintendent, superintendent and treasurer work for us collectively and each of you work and serves at the pleasure of the Trotwood citizens to represent children's best interests. Arm yourselves with the necessary tools to understand your roles. Ask the right questions and demand accurate answers. It is critical to trust but verify. Seek legal counseling, counseling during voting meetings. Operate as a unified body and always maintain sight of the overarching goal of improving our school community through education. Regardless of title, as duly elected officials, you must lead from your seats. Leadership is not confined to position. It emanates from a collective commitment to a greater good. I have faith in your abilities to guide the district forward and I wish you much success, unity, and accomplishments during your tenure. I extend my best wishes to the entire Trotwood Madison City School Board and District. May your efforts be met with success and may the district continue to thrive under your leadership. Sincerely.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. And now, um, Ms. Allen, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Davis?
Mr. Davis is not present. Would you, you could go ahead.
You need the motion to go through. Um, Ms. Cherry?
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Jeter Freeman?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
The motion passed.
Thank you.
And congratulations in your new role and I wish you much success. Thank you. And now we will move to the treasurer's report.
I have two things this evening. The first is for information only. And it is the approval of the November 2nd, 2023 work session minutes, the November 6th, 2023 special meeting minutes, the November 16th, 2023 special meeting minutes, and the November 16th regular meeting minutes. And again, that's for information. We will, I will then ask for approval on the, at the business meeting on the 21st. 4B is approval, and this is for action I'm asking, for the approval of October financial reports. Uh, we did not have a finance committee meeting last month, but I felt it was prudent for me to bring these, um, financials for approval. We have closed the month of November and next, in two weeks, you'll see, um, the financial for November, which obviously includes these October financials. So there are three reports that I have attached. The first one is our cash reconciliation report. And we have at our, in our PNC general account, $4,464,055.81. Our total investments is $29,029,619.19 with a total of $33,493,656 even. Uh, we had outstanding, um, checks and also, um, a small amount of adjustments. That brings our adjusted bank balance and the district balance on the system to equal exactly, uh, in the amount of $33,177,136.53. The second report is the spending plan for October of 2023. And this, um, report shows from the system, the financial system, the revenue and expenses, uh, both the monthly actual and the fiscal year-to-date. Um, I always call your attention to line 6.01, which indicates that, uh, we had more expenses than we have revenue in the amount of $893,702.8. However, fiscal year-to-date, we have more revenue than we have expenses in the amount of $2,728,779.24. The third, third report is checks over $1,000 for the month of October 2023. And they are on board docs for your perusal. And that was all that I, I wanted to present. I also wanted to let you know that under your, your executive tab is the, um, the entire financial packet. It's 13 reports, um, that's under your executive tab if you, if you still, still want to, um, look at that as well. So I did attach that. So I just wanted, um, an approval for those October financial reports if you, if you didn't have any questions.
Okay, um, I'll take the motion to approve the financials.
I'll move to, um, accept treasurer's report, item B, approval of the October financial reports.
Properly moved by Ms. Moore and seconded by Ms. Cherry. Are there any comments?
I do have a comment, Madam President.
I do have a comment, Madam President.
Yes.
Since the financial committee wasn't able to meet, is it necessary for that meeting to occur? To double-check, because...
So we can, but when we meet in two weeks, the November financials will include all of October. So if you want to wait until you vote on these, it's your pleasure.
I think it will be wise for us to wait until the financial team is able to meet and then vote. That's just my recommendation to make sure that we provide checks and ballots.
We had, the information was provided early enough that we could have reviewed and asked any additional questions. Having served on the finance committee meeting, I know that we review these documents, we ask any questions, and you'll get that opportunity again, as Ms. Allen said, in two weeks. Ms. Cherry, I would defer, do you have any concerns of anything? Okay. And Ms. Cherry serves on the finance committee. So I would recommend we approve the financials as presented for tonight. And always, if you have questions, we will ask those at the next... Well, you can send her questions at any time. And she is always responsive to anything that I know I've sent in regards to those. If there are no other comments, Ms. Allen, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Steve.
And Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
Yes, motion passes on the October financial.
And that's all I have this evening.
And now we will move to superintendent's report.
Okay, hello, everyone. I have several things tonight for information and one for action. We'll start with A, the public notice of a retiree hire. The Trotwood Madison City School District Board of Education hereby gives public notice in accordance with section thirty-three oh seven point three-five-three of the Ohio Revised Code that Jill Smith, who was previously employed by the Board of Education as a food service worker, has retired and is seeking reemployment by the Board of Education of the Trotwood Madison City School District as a food service worker. The Board of Education will hold a public meeting on the issue of reemploying the above-named person at a meeting to be held on January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, at five fifteen. The meeting will be held at the Trotwood Madison City School District Board of Education Building at thirty-five ninety-four North Snyder Road in Trotwood, Ohio.
And that one is for action?
No, this one is for information. We have to notify, you know, the community a couple of times, and then we'll take action.
And that's what I thought. We just need to change it on board docs.
Okay.
Yes, Ms. Allen?
I'm thinking that it should be for action because you guys are approving that we should continue to move it forward. So it is for action, Dr. Cosby.
Oh, okay.
And it's just, it's a public notice to, so that we can, we can send out the notice for the January meeting. So we're just asking, can we do that? And that's it is for action.
So that's the motion?
Yeah, that's why it's for action.
Okay, no problem. We had talked about it, and that was not what was shared at the time.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so the motion is as follows, to authorize and direct the treasurer to place a notice on the district website and potentially in the Dayton Daily News no later than December eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three, which reads as I shared with you.
Okay, I like a motion to approve the rehire.
I'll make a motion to accept superintendent's item A, which is a resolution to approve the public notice to, as presented, to reemploy one food service employee.
Second.
Properly moved by Ms. Moore and seconded by Mr. Anderson. Are there any other comments? If not, Ms. Allen, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
And Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
Yes, the motion is approved.
Okay, my item B is for information. It's approval of an overnight field trip for Camp Kern for Westbrook Village fifth graders, an overnight out-of-state field trip to Chicago for our senior class for two thousand and twenty-four, and robotics club overnight out-of-state trip to Greenville, South Carolina. The documents are attached, and if you would like, I can read the letters. I don't mind doing that or move forward.
For the robotics club? That one would be interesting
Okay, okay.
to share with the community.
Okay.
Well, that's the one that Lieutenant Graves, yes, and he presented, so...
He presented that one?
Yes, he did.
Okay.
So we're good. So and this one is information tonight, so we have time
Yes.
for their trips.
Okay, C is approval to participate in the Southwestern Ohio Educational Purchasing Council, EPC, solicitations for bus bids for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Again, that is for information. And then D is approval to participate in the Southwestern Ohio Educational Purchasing Council, or the EPC. This request is for proposals for natural gas suppliers starting in the two thousand and twenty-five calendar year. The EPC, of course, is the way that we're able to get a better price when we purchase things like buses and gas. And again, this is for information only. With the no questions, I'll move to item E. Item E is approval of the personnel agenda. And I will read through the personnel agenda. Item A one is a recommendation for the approval of the following full-time certified retiree hires for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Item A two is a recommendation for the approval of the following certified academic athletic supplementals for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Item A three is a recommendation for the approval of the following certified after-school tutors for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Item A four is a recommendation for the approval of the following certified supplemental adjustment for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Now we have the classified personnel agenda. B one is a recommendation for the approval of the following classified resignations for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. B two is a recommendation for the approval of the following full-time certified retiree hire for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. B three is a recommendation for the approval of the following classified new hire for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. B four is a recommendation for the approval of the following classified academic athletic supplementals for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. B five is a recommendation for the approval of the following classified student worker for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. B six, recommendation for the approval of the following classified staff to be used on an as-needed basis for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And that is the personnel agenda.
I'll take the motion to approve the personnel agenda.
I'll move to accept superintendent's item E, approval for the personnel agenda as presented.
I second that as stated.
Properly moved by Ms. Moore and seconded by Mr. Davis. Are there any questions?
I had a question on one of the items. I'm sorry, I'm going to open up the personnel agenda. You know, one of the things President Jeter Freeman and the board has really talked about was looking at the supplementals as they are presented. And Superintendent Cosby, Dr. Cosby, was really good at having those presentations so that we can understand a lot of what is being looked at and proposed for our students, which is wonderful. Under item, I don't remember where it is now, let's see. Dr. Cosby, do you know where it is? Because I talked to you about it.
The one that you talked to me about, and I believe it would be under A two.
Was it A two?
And we're paying.
Will you? I just want to point it out to the board. Now I'm looking for it, I can't find it. It's like it went away, but I know it's on here.
Do you remember the title?
Yes, which, what is it?
A two.
A two?
A two.
Okay, under A two. I had a discussion under A two with Dr. Cosby about the supplemental... Why am I not seeing this under A two? I don't know where it is under A two, but I thought it was...
A two is a couple of pages.
Okay, let me go down. Here it is. Okay. Thank you. Yeah, Dr. Cosby and I last week, we kind of talked about it because I had a couple of questions on how we work with our band program throughout the district, having Mr. Bean at the head. And then I understand we have two assistant band people that will belong with us. And Dr. Cosby brought me the documentation that I needed to substantiate what we are doing in middle school. So I appreciate that. One of the things that I find is, I love that we have an opportunity for our kids. When we look at our bottom line, we have over half a million dollars in supplementals, and we just have to ensure that it is money, you know, going to will spend. Because we can have people on top of people, or we can repurpose the people that we already have working through the district in different buildings. But I appreciate the information that you shared with me. It makes sense, and I'll go from there. All right, thank you. You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. If there are no other comments, Ms. Allen, would you call the roll for the personnel?
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes.
And Mrs. Jeter Freeman?
Yes, the personnel agenda is approved. And now item six, discussion, follow-up items and updates. And board can send in anything that they would like to add. So the first one is status of the driver's education program.
I have that information for you. All right. We were awarded the Drive to Succeed grant from the Ohio Department of Transportation in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. Our students were eligible to participate if they had a two-point-five GPA and five or fewer unexcused absences in the first semester of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. We currently have four students who have completed twenty-four hours of online coursework and are working with the driving school on the in-person driving lessons. And one student has completed all coursework and passed the driving test and actually got their license. So that's great.
Yay, those are happy parents.
Yeah, yes. We have a waiting list for the participation, and students and families were notified this week that they must reach out to our grants person by December thirty-first to confirm their interest in the program and progress in the online coursework. And that's the holdup. If you wonder, why do we have more students, you know, going for it? They have to do that first part, get the written part done before, and the scholarship is for them to be able to do the in-person driving. So, yeah, so we do have, again, waiting lists. Students and families who do not make contact will be removed from the list, and students from the waitlist will be contacted to ensure we use all of our funds. So we have a total of fifteen thousand. Cost of the classes per student is six hundred dollars. Number of students who we can serve then is twenty-five. And at this point, we have five people who are either in the class or have completed the class. And the families are required, they have to pay and complete that online component. But they, again, have been individually notified to, you know, get it done by the thirty-first so that if they're not going to make that happen, then they'll move on the waitlist. Yes.
Okay. And next up is the status of the swimming pool programs and rentals.
All right, I have information for that as well. We still have our two swim classes that are sixth and seventh period at the high school this semester, and it will continue for next semester. We have forty-two students between the two classes learning how to swim, and they're also learning about water safety this semester. The high school swim team has six swimmers this winter sports season, which is the most we have had in several years. We hosted our first of six Wednesday night swim meets last night with twelve other schools in attendance. We will be holding our annual Trotwood Invitational this Saturday, December ninth. We will have a morning session that begins at six forty-five AM and an afternoon session that begins at twelve fifteen. There are a total of forty-three teams. We will have six hundred swimmers here on Saturday. We do have schools that rent and practice at our pool Monday through Thursday during the week. That is Brookville, Dixie, and Miamisburg. Miamisburg, Tippy Canoe, and Wayne also rent our pool for their swim meets. We also will host these conferences, SWBL, OHSAA Sectionals, Southwest Classic, and the YMCA Swim Meets. These are all rentals. The community swim did take place during the first quarter of this school year with an average of four to six community members coming daily. We will start the community swim backup during the week of February twelfth, and we look at having our free swim lessons for the community members on Saturday from March and April.
Okay.
So we have a lot going on with that.
We do. One of the things we probably need to do is review our rental fee schedule. I don't think we've changed that in quite a few years. And Ms. Allen, that's more chit-chatting for you. So I can't remember exactly what it was, and I know Mr. Howard would know, but, yeah, I think it's time for us to update that because we have our facility cost and everything that we have to add in. And we're providing a huge service for all of those other districts. So I think if we would put that as a follow-up to look at our B round.
Okay, and, you know, we get nothing but great kudos about that swimming pool, how beautiful it is.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yeah, but there's a maintenance cost for us. And as with anything else, if you go to rent a facility or something now, you know, and maybe we're in line. Let's see, Mr. Howard over there kind of looking at me.
Well, we are in line.
We are.
At the actual, I'm close, I'm not.
No, continue.
Okay, and actually, we, you know, with our, arguably the whole swim meets, we probably charge a tad bit more than another local, because Southwest Ohio, it really, other than maybe Miami University, we really are the only swimming facility that other, that other high schools can use. So when they, when they rent, building, and practice, it's not... We're not trying to break it, but it is, it is a very, very expensive price comparable to low quality today.
Can you share that fee? Can you share the cost, the fee?
He said it's about a hundred dollars.
Okay, I hear you.
It's about a hundred dollars an hour just for the rental. Then we charge them, if it's a weekend, we charge them additional fee for what we call an act. Then we charge them, if it's a weekend, we charge them additional fee for what we call an activity supervisor, who is a staff member who manages the, uh, the event. If it's a large event like this, this is gonna have, shortly, you're gonna have staff for the science swim. And then we also charge them for a consultant. So, you know, all of those fees are, are, uh,
Okay, uh, so we're competitive.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. We can probably still just kinda take a peek.
It's in my, I think it is.
Okay, thank you.
I'll send it a little earlier in the year.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Um, treasurers comments? If there are no other comments on swimming?
I just wanted to say, I don't know if I did that a couple of weeks ago. Um, Ms. Moore, congratulations for, um, your new election. Um, we've been working together for almost the last thirteen years. And so I wish you well. I'm sure you're doing great things home, like the city, county. That's all I have.
Superintendent, Dr. Cosby.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just wanted to sort of reiterate some of what was said about, um, going to big national conferences. Um, it is important because you do learn a lot, you do get to see what's happening in other places. And sometimes I feel like it allows you the opportunity to realize that we're doing some of the things that these people are doing. And I tell you, my staff is excited, they're excited about coming to school, we're excited about this year. We feel like we have a lot of great things going on. And, um, and, and I did wanna make sure everybody is aware, even though we do use the pouches, if the teacher needs to have those phones out for their students, like for a science class or math class, they can unlock them and tell the kids to use them, and then they just put them back in. Um, so we do that, I, I agree. Um, it's very exciting to hear, you know, that there are black men in, in our community, which we know, in communities, and, you know, we have them in our community, and they make an amazing difference for our students. Um, as you know, we're working with our heroes of the household, and we need to be inclusive more of fathers, you know, as we do this. So I'm excited and it was, um, nice to hear the things that you said. Also, um, I'm glad that you had a good experience down there, um, Mr. Anderson, and it sounds like you learned a lot, and the things that you talked about also were things we could, you know, also attempt to put in place. So thank you for sharing that. I did want to, yeah, schoolyard rap. That, that sounds like fun. I'm not a good rapper, but I think we could try it. I think we could try it. I also, um, did wanna say that, um, we're really, um, in a time when we haven't a lot of change, and congratulations, I, I think I may have said it, but just in, okay, I did. Okay, just making sure. And, um, and we're gonna also, we also did thank Ms. Jada Freeman for her service to our DLT program when we had our meeting. Um, we have some things going on, so I hope everybody shows up for our next meeting. You don't wanna miss it. I'm just saying, and, um, you gotta come to work on the last day, that's right. And, um, other than that, I mean, we do have, we're moving into the holidays. There are some activities, you know, by our students and in those classrooms, so I will be getting you that information as soon as I get it. And if you get a chance, you know, go in and observe what the kids are doing. So that's all I have as well.
Thank you. And now board comments, Mr. Anderson.
Madam President, I don't have any board comments, I will wait until the last meeting to make my comments.
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
Well, greetings everyone, I always have a comment or two. Um, I'm just thinking about great leaders and, like, a Greek one comes to mind. Uh, guy is Julius Caesar, and I guess this would be the proverbial roll your eyes, right? But, um, uh, quote is, "It is possible to become what it is that you're not." I say that because, um, on this board, I kind of, uh, I'm tongue-tied a little bit, but on this board a little bit, I seem to have become different than what I thought I was gonna be. I thought I was gonna be like, I was very green, I thought it was like, just help, 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 uh, represent, represent, lead, lead, lead. Um, it's turned into more of a passionate thing and a thing of love. One more quote about Julius. "It's only possible to feel betrayed if you loved." So when I see staff, when I see students, when I see parents, especially the lady today, and if she is still watching, I want her to know that I cared about everything that she cared about, but the only thing is, is sometimes it's the wrong time. I need to care about that two weeks from now when she can actually speak on it. So please don't feel like you were ignored today, we're just following procedure. Um, apologize for, um, walking out to approach her in that moment, but my heart was bleeding because I felt something, and I'm a gut person. Um, if somebody walks past me and I feel something on them, I'm a gut person. If I feel good about it, I'm a gut person. And the way that we've led in here, it's been a rough deal at times, but we've got where we wanted to go, and I think we've done, at times, the best we could with what we've had. And I'm in the words of Macho Man, "Whatever it takes." Oh yeah, I think that's how he said that, "Whatever it takes." And, um, that's what I'm trying to do, so please don't confuse my character with me, um, fighting for children. Don't confuse my bad decisions with me not fighting for children. And don't confuse me being you guys' friend. I'm not none of you guys' friend, I never was. I got elected here, I'm just here to do a job. I'm not trying to be none of you guys' friends, honestly. I just wanna work with you to, to build something stronger than I could be with you. Um, especially the one in the back with the Trotwood sweater on. I love her to death because she gave my daughter, when my daughter was at a time of trying to find out who she was, she was like one of the first women's to help my, my daughter with her identity to this day. She doesn't even know that, my daughter's so, um, in middle school now, but just that late, every time I see her, that's the energy I feel for these people. Look at Mallory back there, there was a gentleman at the Y yesterday, or the day before, I heard about. Um, he still, he don't even go to school no more, but just the fact he's seen her at the Y, he threw me out there. Sometimes you just gotta do things organically, um, but I do wish you the best in your endeavors. Um, I know I've probably given you quite the hardest time, Madam Moore, but I do wish you the best in your endeavors, um. It's just, I seen in Star Wars this happened. You start off with Obi-Wan, but then you meet some of the, the dark forces. And then by the end of it, you start off as the hero, but if you live long enough sometimes, you become the anti-hero or the villain, but you're still doing that Suicide Squad kinda work. So it's like, if I get looked at bad, then just know that, in the words of this crazy seventies movie, "This would probably be the last bad guy you see like this," as he walked out in that tuxedo. This would be the last bad guy you see like this on this board. And I just wanna say thank you guys to all of the leadership I've had, even if I didn't just, if I agreed with it or just did agree with it, all of the staff that I've helped hire in the votes. Um, I may not always agree with the tones, I may not always agree with the, the levels of how we're doing things, but just know, I really, really support everything you guys are doing, from staff to admin to, um, just the last few years. Um, it's like a, a sad and sweet thing because when you work with people, you build these relationships. And, um, it's just sad to see us all go different ways at times, but we'll come back together eventually. Um, even if I disagree with everything, I'm still gonna call you guys and email you if it's something. We're allies, um, we can always come back together to fight common good. I digress. Um, uh, Ms. Madam Secretary, you have did an outstanding job. You don't understand what we, what we went through before you got here. Uh, no disrespect to any admin that left, but it has been like, I have not wondered one thing with paperwork since you took this position. Um, that's the only thing I could say, and then to the new board members. Uh, thanks for listening to all my crazy antics, all my long-winded talks. I promised this year coming up, I'm gonna cut them to two minutes, and I'm gonna put it on my phone to click off. So that way, I'll look at my phone, I'll be like, oh, okay, let me digress. Thank you guys, it's been a pleasure serving with you guys. Um, I look forward to everything, Anderson. Um, I know you're gonna wait till the end of the road like boys demand, but I don't wanna wait. Um, I know we don't agree on everything, I know sometimes our allegiances to these political parties matter, but Anderson, they should've never mattered here. I'll just tell you the truth, they should've never mattered here. I looked at you as just the guy that wanted to help kids, and that's what you do. That's why I respect you to this day. Um, it was never about, um, your political affairs or position that, or opinions you had. It was just, to me, you seemed like what I wanted for this job, so that's why I voted the way I voted. Um, I think it's public record with, how I vote, cause for some reason, everything leaks out around here. Again, betrayal, but that's, when you care about people, it hurts you and stuff like that. So thank you for your time with me. Um, it's been like a, you know, a good team thing, and to this day, I still don't know you, but I just appreciated all the things you've done for us, and hopefully, we see each other again down the line. Sorry for being so long-winded, um, I didn't mean to. But yeah, guys, Julius Caesar was what got that going. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Moore?
Madam Chair, I'm gonna be brief and short. First of all, it's really nice when you go to a conference, and Dr. Cosby had to share this, because of your affiliations in different organizations with the superintendent and some of the councils and cabinets that you, you work on, people know you. And they know you from all over the country, well, you know, especially Ohio. And I work with the Ohio Association of Black School Administrators, a group that's, you're a part of with Dr. Sanders. And I am telling you, uh, as soon as they see our Trotwood logos or our tags, your name comes up. So it's evident that you're doing work not just here within the district and outside in the local municipalities, but throughout the state. And it's good work. So it's good to hear that, because, and, and I have to tell you, Ms. Allen, your name precedes you, okay? As well. Um, and that is the beautiful thing about, as you stated earlier, going to these conferences, being able to network, but more so, being able to learn and understand and getting allies. And also, there's nothing new under the sun when it comes to school district business. Trust me, every district goes through the same, whether it be, uh, student discipline, centeeism, superintendent, uh, and board relations, treasurer and board relations, board and board relations. It happens everywhere. So it's really nice when you can be equipped with the tools to learn how to work together as a unified body. Because individually, there's nothing that we can achieve, but collectively, there's a lot that we can achieve. So I just wanted to say that about you two because in the circles that I've traveled in and in the conferences that I have attended, it just never escapes me that somebody does this. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now, Vice President, Mrs. Cherry.
I'll be brief. Um, I wanted to just shout out the fifth grade students who did a remarkable job with the, um, presentation today, um, and also for their parents who came to support them. I wanted to make note of Mariah Day with the signing with the scholarship to, to compete in track. Um, also wanted to thank all the donors, Mr. Lemkin, Ms. Allen, Dr. Cosby, um, and there are a lot more, but that, I'm only, um, addressing the ones that were here tonight. Um, I just wanna say, Dr. Cosby, get ready to embrace a new board. Get ready to embrace a new board, where we will work collectively to move our district forward. Get ready to aspire to go higher. And that's all I have to say.
Very good. And I, um, appreciate the parents from Westbrook Village that took their time out this evening after a long day to bring all of their students. I appreciate the energy, and thank you, Ms. Harton, for, uh, getting them to come out. I think we had over seventeen kids, and I understand we had twenty-five, so that's a pretty good number. Uh, thank you, Dr. Cosby, that we now have the heroes of the household, that it can be virtual and parents can attend virtually. We've gotta move into that, if we have a meeting, it's not just limited because they can't show up. We, we have to use technology to its fullest. And, you know, I sit on the DLT, and they're doing, having great conversations, moving in a great direction, looking at a lot of information. And I think I've recommended that that would also be a good one so that our BLTs and our TBTs get the full extent of the conversations that go on during those BLTs because they are rich in good, in good information sharing during those. So I think we're moving in a good direction, uh, with that. Um, and with that, those are all my comments for tonight. And I'll take a motion to move into executive session to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official, licensee, or regulated individual per Board of Ed Policy zero-one-six-six and ORC one-twenty-one-twenty-two. And I'll take a motion.
I'll move to go into executive session for the reasons stated.
I'll second.
Been properly moved and second. Uh, Ms. Allen, would you please call the role?
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Cherry?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Jada Freeman?
Yes, we will now enter into executive session at six fifty-sevens. Board, if you would, bring your laptops. Boy, if you would bring your laptops.